Okay.
Meeting called a order. Can I get your rule call?
Dr. Robinson.
Yeah.
I'm Wes. Dr. Bunch.
Here.
This is Ware. This is Mr. James.
Here. Everybody in prison is so good to the rest. Let me do adoption of agenda.
Shh, don't move.
You want to move something?
Yes. Let's strike, I am eight point two.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now can you?
Go.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aha.
I have passed the four zero. All right, person come in, Mr. Wes.
Good evening, Chairman, Board of Trustees, Superintendent McDonald Green, and the factoring staff of this district. I am here just to say thank you for holding on to Robert Wood Smith's to allow the community opportunities to release the building, bring back the boys and girls. We're currently taking applications for individuals to serve on the board of directors of the Adams County unit. If you all have anyone that is interested, feel free to get it in a copy of it. She is application. I am certainly grateful for Mr. Philip Wes, who led effort to bring the boys club here to Natchez, and I am tasked to bring it back. So again, just here to say thank you, just giving you some progress. And I don't know, Mr. Pivney got back with you about to leave yet. They need to go to their board meeting in the column in January. They're looking into it.
Yes, sir.
And just saying to say thank you, make sure not to share space with anybody else who wants to serve on it.
All right.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. And we have recognition and presentation of five point one. We have recognition week.
Mr. James, members of the board, happy school board recognition week. Thank you all for everything that you do. We know you don't do it for the money, that's for sure. But we are glad that you all are here and representing the Natchez Adams School District and county of Adams, city of Natchez. Now, I must say, going through the classes I've been going to and hearing stories about other boards, I'm thankful for the board that we have here in Natchez. So at this time, I see that our schools, our principals are here, so I know that they have some goodies for you. So we will start, start out in the country.
Good evening, Mrs. McDonald. Mr. James and members of the board, we would like to extend our appreciation from Wes Elementary for everything that you do for us and our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you.
All right.
What should congratulations?
He done done something else extraordinary.
What did she do extraordinary?
Tell her. Put it on the table.
All right, there's still hope for me. I'm under fifty, so there's still hope. Anyone else? Oh, yeah. You can't dress to the occasion, Mr. Wes.
Always.
Good afternoon, Mr. James, members of the board. Ken, we would like to recognize you all for your leadership and support at different levels. We have happy, but it's not just me. It's the capital bulldog nation, at the high school, national college, Natchez Options Academy, and private community. So we appreciate you all for your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you all, thank you.
Get it all into it. Get to all that we can go.
What you got?
What's the deal? Get to get to. It took twelve people. Y'all doing good. No more cooks. Drinking thing. We gotta carry them full.
And those of us here at Central Office here in Brayden, we come to fan envelopes too.
Give me two more, man. Probably CD in there.
Appreciate it. Natchez Mills.
Yes, on behalf of Natchez Mills School, we want to show our appreciation for the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I hope you make sure you say.
Thank you.
We got to come.
Thank you.
Thank you, bro.
Well, thank all of you. We really appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
And you're very respectful.
Also, we have a lot of wear ads from our governor, Kate Reed. So he did do a proclamation in your honor. I'll make sure you all, well, sorry, Miss Dave, make sure you all get a copy of it. We also have a certificate of appreciation to you, honoring you all during school board member recognition week in Mississippi, February seventeenth through the twenty first, twenty twenty five, for commendable leadership and service on behalf of the students and community in the Natchez Adams School District. Ms. Mack? It's picture time.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Bunch?
Yes?
Oh, come on.
Oh, no.
Oh, go on.
She's coming to you.
Take my name, doctor.
Yeah. Dr. Brenda Robinson.
Oh, thank you, doctor.
Yes, ma'am. The one of the ones of Wes.
Tell her.
Yes, ma'am.
You didn't let Ms. McDonald sign? She gonna do it in person. Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson.
I used to take care of her, but DJ.
Yes, ma'am.
That's our tea. Yeah?
Of course, we'll leave Mr. Wes here on the gym. And our president, Mr. Amos James Junior.
He's a pleasure.
Yeah, I think it's life.
Let's give our board members a thank you all for your presentation.
All right. Now we have five point two. Wes, data.
Good evening, again, members of the board, Superintendent Backgreen. We have our data for Wes Elementary. We'd like to say that our parents are our first teachers. However, we know on the elementary level that pre-K, kindergarten, and first grade are our foundational ages. We did give the IStation reading for our pre-K students. This IStation is a new platform this year that our students are, they have to take. We, they have a BOY which is in September, and we, they have progressed all the way to February. We're looking at the level one and level two students. We have forty-six percent. Our bubble students are twenty-seven percent, and our level fours and fives are twenty-seven percent. We are moving across the state. We are looking at these numbers, but across the state by this being a new platform, and our students always have five seconds to answer the questions, to look and answer and process the question. We're trying to get our numbers up on our level fours and fives. But being this is a new platform, our numbers look like this across the state. However, we have some other tests that are put into place for our students to start early. And Ms. Clark will come behind me and give those numbers with the start early reading for our pre-K and kindergarten. For kindergarten, our level one students were at thirty-six percent in February. That was our last benchmark. They take tests every week. Our level two students are at twenty-one percent. Our bubble students are at sixteen percent, and level four and five, that is twenty-eight percent. So we put our level fours and fives together because those are the students that are excelling and exceeding, above or at benchmark. If we look at our IStation math, our level one students, the last benchmark was seventeen percent. The percentage of level two students are fourteen percent. Our bubble students are twenty-one percent, and level four and five students are twenty-eight and twenty-one percent. Our first grade reading, we have some new policies into play. We have put in our intervention plan. Our activity people are working with our bubble students, and we do have the hour of power at the end of the day for our first grade students because when they leave first grade, we want them to be on a one point five level or above. Looking at the benchmark, you see the numbers. However, when you actually look at the Renaissance, you're actually looking at colors. So we have the dark green, light green, blue, yellow, and red. In reading for first grade, we have fifty percent that are above or at benchmark. The bubble students, we have thirteen percent of those bubble students that are in blue, and we have our yellow and red students together, which is thirty-seven percent. That is in reading. In math, we have better numbers. The percentage of students that are above or at benchmark is forty-eight percent. The students that are on watch, which are bubble students, that's twenty-four percent. And the students that are urgent intervention and intervention are twenty-nine percent. And as I said before, we do have interventions put into place to help these students. The hour of power is from one thirty to about two fifteen. So all they are doing then is they are going back to intervene with the students that are below benchmark. We have Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we have reading. And Tuesdays and Thursdays, we are working with those students in math. So that is everyone on campus, including myself and Ms. Clark, that go to those classrooms to work with particular students that are below benchmark. Like I said, Ms. Clark will follow me with the actual numbers from our start early because those numbers look a little better because when you have only six minutes, or six seconds, I'm sorry, to process and answer a question at the age four and five, it's kind of hard for them. So we have been talking to Mr. Tarver Sinisee about getting them the one-click mouse or the touch screens so they can actually look at, process, and answer the question by touching it instead of trying to figure it out with a mouse. So we figured out some things that we need to put into play to make sure our students at this level excel. Okay, I'm comparing the IStation, which is our new platform, to the start early that we've been using for the past ten years or more. So I'll share it with you all. As Dr. Hagen stated, levels one and two, kindergarten and reading had fifty-seven percent on IStation. Levels one and two in start early were at nineteen percent. So the numbers look better in start early versus IStation. Our at or above percentages are higher, which is seventy-one percent for kindergarten reading, and then in IStation is at twenty-eight percent. So there's a difference in the data with the student in the classroom. Are there any questions from this? No? Thank you very much.
Okay, five point three.
Mrs. Harrington is that here today. She's our president. This is our time. But we would like to celebrate this Gabrielle Harrington, who is one of our gifted teachers. She is now a nationally board certified teacher. So we applaud her for receiving that national certification.
The item number six, approval minutes. Approved January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes. To get approved. We move the seven all in favor. Five, pass the four zero. Okay, item number seven. Consent items. Anything in consent item need to be moved to action item is not to get approved.
I move for a four what? Seven four one two seven point four.
Seven. You can move second or in favor. All right, pass the four zero. Eight point one two.
Good afternoon, Mr. James, members of the board, Ms. McDonald, Mr. Kennedy. On behalf of the superintendent, the Department of Public Resources is presenting the personnel board report from Tuesday, February the eighteenth, twenty twenty five. The superintendent is requesting that the board of trustees approve the personnel board report and the FYI information and the vacation list that you have before you in the packet. Are there any questions in regards to any other query?
Can I get approved?
Second.
Move the second all in favor. Pass the four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Querry.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the board, superintendent, and mayor council. You have before you item three point two, the approval of the claim dockets and statements and financial reports. We have the January seventeenth, January thirty-first claim dockets included in the packets along with the January financial reports. There's financial budgets for boards and capital projects signed for the Natchez High School. They're all presented for review. Before we get to the approval section, I want to first pause and see if there are any questions regarding any of the financial report items.
Any question? Not? Do you get approved? Can I get? It is a second.
A second.
Move the seventh all in favor. I have passed the four zero. Eight point three. Yes, yes, we. When I'm supposed to be done? Is they?
Who did they come?
Jackie and I. When I'm supposed to be done?
You supposed to be acting the chairman of events when your board meeting's over.
Oh, okay, so when is it?
Transferred from March one from eighteen to the twenty fifth and the June, July one from the fifteenth to the twenty second.
When are we doing that?
Say it again, now. March the?
March eighteenth to March twenty-fifth, and July one from July fifteenth to July twenty-second. Say it again.
I'm gonna be gone that twenty-fifth, too.
You, she gonna be gone too. You gonna be gone too?
We can't be gone yet?
I will be.
What am I doing?
But I'll be gone.
Say that again.
Everybody gonna be gone now. We're early.
You say what, now?
What could Mr. Wes lead on the eighteen?
You say what?
You hear the date. You going on to twenty-fifth?
March.
You, March.
I'm gone.
You gone, you gone. He gone. Mr. Wes already gone. You gonna be gone too?
February.
So what?
March.
March.
March thirty-first to April fifteenth.
No, no, no. The meeting was on the eighteen.
Could we do it earlier?
Yeah, we can do it.
Eleven?
On the eleven?
It's very great.
Okay, February eighteen tomorrow.
I'm gonna be gone.
Whether February eighteen to March twenty-two.
Eighteenth to March twenty-two.
Oh, when is it?
I don't think it's out, see?
I leave more than.
Can you do it later that weekend more?
Seventeen, hold on. Seventeen.
Because I don't think it is.
What's the seventeen of?
I think it is.
It's one of March eighteenth.
Seventeen.
Those are nation. So March twenty-second and July twenty-second.
No, I won't be. I'll be gone till April. And everybody.
So neither one of those days will work for you.
None of them. Somebody, somebody said what?
What about thirty-first? March?
It's the last day of the year. It's finally, you know.
I'll be back.
That's probably, we gonna do that.
You thirty-first?
Yeah, yeah, let's do that.
Why they thirty-first?
March thirty-first.
And what about July?
I can't think of that.
And July?
You gonna have to change masses to that, please.
What, what that now?
Masses, July.
So what we changing to?
Twenty-second.
And then I can go back.
No, 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 no.
We'll be here playing.
You good on?
I think I'm.
And that's July?
Yes.
July. Did, say it again, in twenty-one?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Twenty-sixth, we gonna do that, yeah. Twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, we do.
What's happening back there?
This is ours, when we go to our region.
The region, the region.
You say you ain't going across the bridge?
No, no, I'm not going across.
Did you move through Alexander? Ain't got no bridge. All right, we good, then. All right. Hey, can we make the motion to change the date?
I live that we change the day of the next, of the March board meeting. The thirty, July. And the July meeting. The twenty-second. Thirty-first of March, twenty-second of July.
Second.
Move the seven all in favor. All right, pass the four zero. Eight point four.
Eight point four, Mr. James, members of the board. It's a request to approve a partnership with Brayden Extended Education and Cultural Enrichment Center. As the board is aware, you approved for Pretty Girls with Brains and Southwest Mississippi Wells to occupy the Frazier site to provide community programming and workforce development programming. And so a part of that leads, if there are other partners that want to work with those two entities, they require more approval. So it started on page seven of that packet. Mrs. Bell has outlined a number of community partners that she has met with and that she desires to bring into that facility to provide services for our community, for students. And I believe that they are really powerful programs. We also have Mr. Boyes working with Mrs. Bell as well, who's gonna be providing some mentoring. And so hopefully, we can do some innovative things to keep children in school, but also giving them the life lessons and guidance that they need in order to make better choices. And so that list of providers is there. So we're seeking approval for the board for Mrs. Bell to go into partnership and they occupy our rooms at the Frazier site.
And I want to say that she was very detailed.
Yes.
In this agreement, she even has a maintenance supervisor. So, you know, that speaks volumes. And we just don't want this school to be idle. It's been idle long enough. And they have so many opportunities for someone to come in for different trades, for tourism and hospitality, landscaping, gardening, culinary arts. I mean, it just goes on and on. There's so much needed in our community. So thank you all. I see some names on here that's gonna, that's gonna be volunteering. So I appreciate it, you know. That's what we call a neighborhood school. So I appreciate it, and I hope we all utilize it.
And I encourage you, if you haven't gone over there, go to the site to visit to see how they have transformed those rooms.
So second.
Okay, y'all in favor. Okay, eight point five.
With the people there.
As you know, Jefferson Comprehensive Health Center occupies a portion of McLauren Elementary providing health care services. They, they pay a rent, a fair market value rent of eight hundred dollars a month. There are some repairs needed to the floor there around their duty station. And they are offering to have the repairs done themselves and abate the rent for the period of time to collect the rent. Five months to equal what the expected cost is.
So they need some work needed down on the building.
Working the floor. Floor around where.
I'm just gonna check to make sure that the work got done.
Our, our maintenance.
Our maintenance people will check to see. I move that we approve their request to abate the rent for Jefferson Comprehensive. Second.
Move the seven all in favor. All right, pass the four zero. Imagine something, there's two, two things out there, right? They out there in the mow. What's in the other? Isn't it some flowers in there or something?
Storage area.
There's some weeds or something in there. Something growing up there. And when you drive by, you got, isn't it some weeds or something grow up through the floor or something? There's some trees in there. They been there a long time. I went to school in there. Your mother. That was in seventy-nine. That thing over the floor. I don't pass by it every day. And they got some trees in there. Look at here. Some trees in there. Oh, that mow, that go. Take your gun with you. All right, eight point six.
Eight point six, Mr. James, members of the board. It's approved to extend the lease between Natchez Adams School District and Congressman Bill Thompson. As you all are aware, they occupy an office space at the Natchez Options Academy. And so this is an agreement to extend that lease.
So move. Second.
Move the seven all in favor. Pass the four zero. Eight point seven.
Mr. James, members of the board, seeking approval for out-of-state and overnight traveling. Out-of-state for Wes first graders. Out-of-state, Natchez High School JROTC. Overnight for Natchez High School tennis. Overnight for Natchez High School and Natchez Middle School TSA. And out-of-state for Natchez High School choir. Technology Association.
Seven.
And seven.
Second.
Move the seven all in favor. Pass. Eight point eight.
Thank you.
I was, Mr. James, members of the board, seeking approval for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six volleyball schedule.
So.
Move the seven.
Second.
All in favor. I have passed the four zero. Eight point nine.
Eight point nine. Mr. James, members of the board, one of our accreditation standards requires that the school districts have updated. that, uh, school districts have, uh, updated strategic plans, um, that outlines the board's priorities and goals. So it is time for us to revise that strategic plan. So I submit at our place in your packet, our current goal, board goals, and priorities. So two things, one, I'm seeking approval of the current board goals and priorities. And then second, uh, permission to, uh, work with our community stakeholders to update their strategic plan around the board's goals. So if you take a look at those goals, if there's anything that you would all like to change, that will be a part of our discussion. But if not, we will retain the same priorities and goals, we will just up, update the action plans and strategies.
Good.
Okay, you get approved?
I move that we, we approve to keep these strategic planning and, and, and update with the, our stakeholders.
Okay.
So as a part of that, we will have to establish a work session. So I will work when we occupy for another time. Be that all members of the board, if designated people, members of the board can be a part of those stakeholder discussions as we do this work.
Okay. All right. Now, item number nine, uh, number one, board calendar. Anything need to be added, take it off. Give it to Ms. Davis, for the board calendar. Nine point two.
Nine point two, uh, uh, I know, hopefully you all received the board updates from last week. Uh, if you're not, I'll have you with, for maximum copy. I just want to commend our girls, uh, girls' basketball, uh, team for winning, uh, in the, is that first round? On this past Friday, they played against.
Wayne County.
Wayne County. Uh, they will play this coming Friday at four o'clock P M. at Pearl River Community College. So we applaud them for their continued, uh, winning. Uh, we also applaud our bo, boys' basketball. Unfortunately, they lost, uh, on this past Saturday about, I think about four or five points. Uh, and they played against Law. Law, so we.
They knew they won.
Right, or really this season.
I just wanted to do about six that.
Well, thank you again for the gift. See, we're all very kind to have done that. You're rightful. It's the children that we care about the most.
We got a principal in the house.
Oh.
Tony. You got more of yous?
Thank you. I apologize. At the beginning, I think we wanted to make sure, hello, school board members. On behalf of the student staff and families of Moren Town Elementary School, we want to extend our heartfelt gratitude for your dedication and service to our school community. Your leadership and commitment help create opportunities for our students to learn, grow, and succeed every day. Thank you for your unwavering support and for making a difference in the lives of our students. We appreciate all that you do. Need to make sure. Start with the secretary. A little something for us. Mr. James. Yours?
Yeah, we'll make sure he is.
And we would also like to invite you to our Black History Program, which will be this Thursday at five thirty. Have more. Oh, wait, I think y'all's reading there, I'm sorry. Yours is in your car.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanna thank you all once again for the, uh, this, I totally appreciate you. And it's just so good to be on a board where we all collaborate in, in, you know, in a family fashion. This is just, one, I have at least six meetings a week. This is one, always one of the best meetings that I don't mind coming to because at the end of the day, we make great decisions for the students. So, on behalf of me and the board, I'm gonna say the board because I don't even know what I'm saying. But thank you all for, for just being great administrators. I sit there and I look at other schools, and Lord have mercy, we have a great district. Thank you, McDonald, for everything that you do, and all you all down here. And if anybody didn't hear me on Zoom, thank y'all.
Okay, I'd like to thank you all for the gifts, too. I'm glad we got away from cuffs. You know, all they, we got cash. You take the cup, I take it. Being a family member coming around to here for you. Nice cup. So I got cups all over the United States, all up in Omaha and the Brown. So, uh, thank you, thank you. So appreciate that. Is there anything else, cuffs, anything else? Just stay like this, here. I got, good, I, you, the hooker always be telling me about, uh, I was one of the first people to leave the Black lawn over there. So, I'm, since the, uh, uh, superintendent though, uh, he was telling me, I, y'all need to put a statue on me over there. Statue of me over there, proper spitting on somebody, or, or whatever, over there. All right.
Before we adjourn, we, uh, just want to, uh, honor the lega, uh, legacy and memory of Mr. Larry Butler.
With a beauty.
Who has on yesterday. Uh, just to see the, uh, expressions of sentiments of his former students on social media has been heartwarming to know the impact he had on students who went through this problem.
He's like one of the best educators there, that his district has. The kids love him.
Oh, yeah, and, and also, uh, board members taking this, these are the dates that we, we want to do our. And some of this might have to change for that, no, it, it don't have to change, it. Seventeenth, June.
Like March twenty-fifth, I don't have any time.
So we might have to have a meeting on the July fifteenth then.
We want to change to the sixth, if you're not gonna be on.
The bud, we got an adopted budget on one of them day. Certain days, we got the adopted budget on. But anyway. Okay, well, we can go into a joint.
I move that we adjourn, second.
Remove seven, all in favor. All right, pass four zero. Meeting another joint, thank you all for coming out.